Shalom. Let me get my um. Livestream set up. It's been quite a while since I've done a live, so glad to be back. In business. Um, here we go. Um, and let me mute. My sounds, alright. So I can see what's going on. Alright, so shalom, 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 not gonna um beleaguer this too long. Um, the purpose of this live is to go over the um celestial um. Events for October. Um, what we're trying to do is create momentum, so um. The momentum looks like this. You have the evening and then the morning, and that was the first day. So you have to work from evening to morning to create the momentum. So the first um. We did a um. We did a morning ritual for the Aries full moon that just passed. And so we have an evening ritual coming up for the um. The Libra new moon, which is also going to be a ring of fire um solar eclipse. And so um if you're interested in that, you sign up for my newsletter. It's gonna be on um. I wrote it down. It's gonna be on October the eleventh, that's a Wednesday at nine o'clock. Um, and we have a you uh zoom like platform that that we use for that. Which you don't have to actually like download an app and all of that. So um I don't have it on this main calendar, so if you're interested in that. You can sign up for the newsletter that will be in the description box um. When this video is over, or if you look at my other videos, it's in the description box with all the videos. So um, I just want to, for posterity sake. Um encode the things that um. See, because we're doing this for ourselves personally. And I'm also doing this on behalf of. America, Ameru Kans, the the indigenous quote unquote people and all of the current citizens. So um you can see how some of these things pan out, so the first thing is um. We I uh the first request I made was to direct the highest power to restore daughter Zion and the American people to its purpose. I also asked um. To direct American leaders to restore emphasis on good artists, good literature and good writers and. I just found out that there was an end to the writer's strike and the writers are actually gonna be paid. The way that they're supposed to, so that's already in effect. I also asked to direct American leaders to improve the living positions of the daughter of Zion and the American people. Because if our living conditions are improved, that means living conditions all across the planet will be improved. Um, I asked to direct American leaders to support and fund independent healers and practitioners. Um, independent healers, practitioners and natural medicine, so hopefully we'll see some positive movement in that area. I also asked to direct the undying world to support any American leader who is restoring daughter Zion and the American people. And to remove or attack any leader who is not. And Saint Cyricus, who um I put his information in a post. Um, I asked him to direct American leaders to stop persecuting Orthodox and those followers of the old religion. And direct the lion to protect the Orthodox from any adversary. Um, and you will understand that if you read that particular um. Um, post I put up about him. So let's go ahead and look at the calendar for um October. I just got one of these um little uh calendar books from TJ Maxx, it was ten dollars. Um, what I'm doing with the calendar is um. I'm writing down all of the important astrology um. Movements for the month in like the at a glance section. Um, and since I know my astrotherography, I'm also making a note of what energies I have to deal with for this month. Um. And I let me just explain that a little bit. The astrotherography readings are now available, they're on a website. The thing about it is um. I I think I explained it, but I wanna explain it a little bit more. When you get an astrotherography reading. If you are under the age of twenty seven. You would just be dealing with the roots of the tree, and the way that it works is it cycles. So from age one to age nine. You're gonna be dealing with um. The bottom of the tree to the top. Then at age ten, you do another cycle, ten to eighteen, you cycle through the bottom to the top again. Then at age twenty to age twenty, uh well nineteen to twenty seven, you cycle from the roots of the tree again. One whole year for one energy. Once you turn twenty seven. You can pull your prog- I could pull your progression chart. And then you actually do your progressions chart for that year for the next nine years until you turn thirty six. Once you turn thirty six. Well, really, once you turn thirty seven, then you start getting the progressions every thirty six days. So if you have children who are thirty six or thirty seven and you're trying to figure out why their life isn't such chaos and. All of this stuff, it's because they go from the energies being one energy per year. Oh no, I knew my instance wasn't lit, I'm sorry. I was like, wait, I don't smell my instance, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, y'all. I'm being ridiculous. But I need my instance, I could I could tell it was something was wrong, something happened. I got these cool backflow instances. Where's my lighter? This is ridiculous. Okay, I'm not gonna stress myself all over this. Cause I can't do it without burning myself up right now. Um, I don't see, okay. So if you see like one of your child, like if you're older and you see one of your children, they're having like crazy stuff happen to them. It's because they're going from dealing with these energies, one energy per year to. One energy every thirty six days and it's like. I don't know, it's kinda, it makes you feel like you have a hormonal imbalance, I think this is probably when a lot of women start going through their menopause and all of that because. The energies just get thrown at you like boom, 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 they're so like. Intense, and so um. For kids, it's helpful to know what kind of energy is coming up from them, and if you get a kid's reading. That will let, that will go with them and you can pro- watch the progressions and if. They get into a tough year because you can see that in advance. You already know you need to be easy on them that year because it's gonna be a tough year. This is aimed at preventing suicides, this is aimed at preventing um harmful uh actions to themselves and to others. You can see all of this in the astrotherography. So I have a kid's reading for that and I also have a a kid's reading with the astrology. Which is extremely important because I will give you their chart and I will also give you their um. Their human design, so let me talk about hu-. Human design is extremely important. Because human design will help you to understand yourself and how you need to interact with people. And for kids, it's quadruple important, like I have a child who is a generator, I'm also a generator. I'm working with her to learn how to operate like a generator, she's operating much too much like a manifestor. And so she's gonna burn out that way, so since I know she's a generator, I know it for a fact because I pulled her chart myself. I need, I'm trying to redirect her into. M- generator energies and away from this manifestor energy because it's not ended, it's not gonna, she's gonna burn out, it's not gonna work for her. She's got to be operating from the right perspective. I have a projector, I have a manifestor and I have a generator, like I'm gonna get first close. Firsthand experience with all of this, it's gonna be like, it's already been very helpful, so like my projector. You think, oh, this teenager's in a lot of sleep, no, she's a projector, she does need a lot of sleep. She gotta do her thing for a little while and she's gotta go and be left alone, it's not like there's something wrong with her. Not that I thought something was wrong, but it's easy to believe that because. You see the other teens, they don't act like that, well, they might be manifestors, they might be generators, so it could be that. They're they're just not the same, and so this information just helps you as a parent, grandparent, whatever. Understand how to interact with your child so that they can make the most of their life, and since this information will travel with them, you can keep notes. And we'll talk about that when we get into the the journal, but you can keep notes on, okay, what what tough time was them? What what a tough time was for them, how you handled it, how they got over whatever, and that's something that. As a book about them, a useful book about them, you can give them to say, okay, when you have kids. This is how you ha- this is how I handled these situation with you, this is how I did this with you, and this is how we pass this information on generationally, so it doesn't just. What our ancestors did not do is they did not preserve the information and the way that they did things for us to actually use. They had it in their head and because they were afraid of, you know, whatever it was, they were able to. Um, you know, keep it for themselves, but they couldn't pass it on to us, or they didn't, they didn't, they didn't choose to do that. We have to actually do better, we have to really um make sure that we preserve this information. For the children to come and that way. That we'll be able to pass this thing on and this thing will never happen to us again. Because it's easy, I mean, San Kofa, that was one of my very first tattoos. Those who forget their past are doomed to repeat it, and this is extremely true. People who forget their past are really, really doomed to repeat it, and so I highly recommend that. You know, invest some this kind of thing into your kids, it's important. Uh, especially to children and then especially yourself, learn yourself first, okay, always. You uh 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 you first, and once you have a good understanding on yourself and you're working on it. Move on to the children and the grandchildren or whoever, you wanna get the information. Again, you don't have to get it from me, I don't care where you get it from, it's not about me, money and all of that. No, it's about, we have to set a template that our kids can follow, and since nobody seems to be. Trying to figure out how to make a process which children can follow, people are telling people to do intuition and all of that. Well, you can teach intuition with the tarot spiral, that's the whole point of it, so that I could tell my kids, hey, if you gotta figure out what to do. Pull you some cards, find out where it is on there and you know what it means. Nobody seems to be like thinking about how the next generation who is practically brain dead as it's as it stands. It's gonna understand this, this is the problem with this boomer money mindset, this is what I'm calling, let me write that down. So I can, the boomer money mindset. I know, I'm gonna get to the um charts, I'm sorry. This is important. So, there's a problem with the boomer boomer money mindset, this is not all boomers and this is some people who aren't boomers too, a lot of people. Who are my generation also have this boomer money mindset. You create momentum in your life through giving. Okay? Everything that I do. It has a price, but it also has a non-price, meaning I tell you. Look, go look it up, you can get it for yourself, you don't have to get it from me, it's not the point, the point is that you have the information. Right? So. You cannot create momentum in your life, no matter what celestial information you follow. You cannot create momentum in your life if you are not giving. And this is not giving because you have to, this is not giving because um, you know, somebody shames you into giving. No, this is asceticism, and I shared a video about this and it's really important to get into your. What what is coming through through the various mediums right now? People who are directly connected to different celestial hierarchies is that. The aesthetic life is the life that we need to be getting into, and asceticism is basically. Devoting your life to your religion. If it's not Christianity, if it's whatever it is, you devote your life to it, everything you do, you do for that. This is what like the Buddhists do, you know, they don't, it's the same thing, it's devoting your life to whatever you believe. And a lot of people, they're not doing that, like they don't truly believe what they say, they say things they don't mean it. They're not devoting themselves to it, they're going to it and then they're going away from it and they're they're interjecting their own stuff in there. When if you were given clear instructions to do something, you gotta stand ten toes down on that, and what I'm finding out is that. You will be tested on your standing ten toes down, you're not, they're not gonna make it easy because why? Too many of our people have been given the easy route and as soon as they get five dollars in their pocket, they act like they better than somebody. So they can't afford. The most high cannot afford, the mother cannot afford for you to just. Mess this up. So yeah, you're gonna be tested all along the way, and I can see now why that has to be because. Uh otherwise, people will never, ever, ever do what they're supposed to do, that's right, they just won't do it. Um, the people who will, the meek shall inherit the earth, and the people who don't. They ha- they'll have everything stripped from them, but this is what asceticism is about, it was crazy that that video, that whole term came to me. I wasn't thinking about asceticism, I wasn't looking into it, and then all of a sudden someone was like. Oh, it was the saints, Saint Cyricus, Cyricus? Anyway, that saint, I read his story and he was talking about, it his thing was, he was a per- he lived in perfect asceticism. And I read when the different saints, cause I read their stories when I do the daily prayers. All of them were aesthetics, and I said, well, what is asceticism, what is that? And I've listened to a few videos about it, but the one I shared on my page was the one that resonated the most with me because it really explained how. You get this information into you and you literally devote yourself to it, you give everything to it. Um, physical action is required, you know, there's not, it and it's not the same physical action for everyone. Um, the woman who I whose video I watched, she. Called it energy philanthropy, and I like that, that's what I do. When I get information, I process it, I simplify it. In the best way that I can, and then I put it on the internet, this whole tarot spiral which I. Labored over after finding it from somebody else and not feeling quite right about it, all of this stuff. I literally labored over this thing and then I put it on the internet, that's energy philanthropy, so it was, I feel like. Oh, I am contributing something to the greater whole, if it's not money, I can't support everybody's, every single person's effort, although. When people say, even if you send a dollar, even if you send a dollar, if I have a dollar, I will send a dollar. Because I understand that it's an exchange and my dollar may only, well, what happens is, when I do send people money, then all of a sudden. They get get tapped into my energy and they feel like they own my energy, so that's been like unsuccessful. Um, for me so far, but I'm not, I'm not giving up on that, it's just that I know what, I just know this is kind of the thing for me. So um I did wanna, so the boomer money mindset is really going to hold you back, you really need to get into. Different kinds of philanthropy, energy philanthropy or literal philanthropy. Um, and you, because you can only create momentum in your life through giving. And emotion is momentum, so when you give, that's an extension of your emotions and that is how you create the momentum in your life. And so if you feel like you're stagnant, things aren't moving the way that you want them to, um you're getting caught up in a bunch of stuff. You can create momentum in your life through giving, you can create momentum in your life through shopping with reputable people. Um, if you're black, shopping with black businesses, whatever the case may be, shopping in general. Spending money, th- that whole, spending your time, you being a philanthropist of your time. Those things co- create momentum in your life and without those things creating a momentum. You will see that you'll get a certain advancement and then you're gonna be taking back a step. I feel like. I. Hmm, maybe I won't say that right now, alright, let's look at the calendar. Okay, so um October has um, every month basically has a new moon and a full moon. Um, so if you got your calendar out, this is how I marked mine up. So you can see, I got um, I'm gonna read these off to you. And we'll probably do this every month, but I just went ahead um. Oh, let me show you the other thing that I did. So I wrote where um October, I think it says to do, I just replaced that with um astrology. So um. I have more stuff on this one, so on October the fourth. We have um Mercury moves into Libra, right now, obviously Mercury is in Virgo, it just came out of retrograde. So October, so the timestamp for this is twenty min- let me write this down so I can make the timestamp later. Twenty minutes and thirty seconds. Is when I started the calendar. Alright, so. The um, okay, so. October astrology. On the fourth of October, Mercury moves into Libra. Um, it's been in Virgo, now it's gonna move into Libra. On the eighth of October, Venus moves into Virgo, Venus has been in Leo, and so now it's gonna move into Virgo. Now. Last year, at this time, I started watching the astrology and it was really strange and now I understand what I was seeing because. Mercury uh. Mercury and Venus like. Are like wanting to catch up to the sun now, it's like the sun is just like moving forward on its regular rotation and because. Mercury and Venus both have retrogrades, they kinda got backtracked or whatever, so now they're like rushing to catch up, that's the. Kinda like the energy between Mercury and Venus, and so that's why you see a lot of things being completed at the end of the year. Because you have Mercury and Venus literally rushing to catch up with the sun. Um, on the tenth of October, Pluto goes direct in Capricorn. So there's gonna be a huge energetic shift with that, and that's on the tenth. Okay, on the twelfth of October, Mars um. Is Mars moves into Scorpio. So Mars is actually ahead of the sun. And Mercury and Venus are behind, and so they're all like, seems like they're trying to catch up to the sun. Alright, so on the fourteenth of October, you have a Libra solar eclipse and it's a new Libra new moon. And I'll talk about the Libra new moon in a minute. Um. On the twenty second, you have Mercury going into Scorpio. And on the twenty third, you have the sun moving into Scorpio, so you see Scorpio, Mercury moved really fast through Libra. Um, it it's it's like shoo, like fast, because it was in Virgo for a long time, so it's like. Shoom straight through, uh that's only like two or three weeks, basically it's sending, it's spinning in lever before it's going into Scorpio. And then on the twenty eighth, you have a lunar eclipse in Taurus and a Taurus full moon. And so um. Let's talk first a little bit about this um. This is twenty-three thirty-four. This is, let's talk about the Libra new moon. Alright, so. Okay. New moons, I've already shared this with you all, but I will share it again. New moons um. Wait a minute, where did I put it, okay? New moons are about creating experiences or receiving experiences, so Libra. Is um. The card is the hangman and a death card, it's also the. Five, six and seven of swords and the knight of swords, so. And Libra has this energy, is a very fast-moving energy, but it's also kinda like a justice energy. And so depending on where in your chart um Libra falls. That's what you want to actually be asking to receive, and so um again, the statement is um. What? Okay. Dog, that's so like distracting. Okay, I'm sorry, that that was distracting. Um. So. What you wanna do is with your statement for the new moon. It's it's a, I use I, I am statements, you can also use I am that I am, you can use straight I am, whatever makes you feel comfortable. I again, I use I am, I I am because it unites I, the me, with the I am, that's how I see it. Um, it's like putting a, the comma is kinda like a plus sign, it 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 joins them together, okay? So you want to say something like, I I am receives. Unencumbered experiences of the whole hot sign house, so wherever your Libra is. That's where you want to put what the theme for that house is, this is why you need your whole house chart so you can. You know, whatever your Libra house is, um and again, we are gonna have a conference call on this. Um, on November the, I mean October the eleventh. To discuss, um people can ask personal questions and we can, I can make sure everyone understands the mission. Um, that's what that's for, but this is for people who not trying to do all that, um, this is how you put your statement together. Okay, so. The the Libra, now also this Libra new moon is completing the Libra full moon. Let me tell you when the Libra full moon was. The Libra full moon, oh my goodness, this is crazy, the Libra full moon was um April the fifth. That was the Libra full moon, so that would have been shortly after our new year. Matter of fact, it's the first full moon after our new year, and that was in sixteen degrees of Libra, let me tell you what that was about. Um, sixteen degrees of, I might take my glasses off to read this. Sixteen degrees of Libra, so. Uh, this spirit intelligence controls the health and duration of life of all animals on the earth. He is also control, the controlling spirit for all instincts, therefore he inspires man with all. The curing methods and remedies against the various diseases of animals. Under his control are all zoologists, veterinary surgeons and tamens of wild animals. This guy inspires the spiritual light with great variety of healing methods and medicines for diseased animals. He can also communicate with many spiritual, many spiritual practices to be applied to animals for instance. By which milking animals can, are caused to give much milk or practices by which they are protected against unfavorable influences or whatever. So to me. That particular energy is kind of like um. Specifically, it's kind of like. This. These disease um. These disease created um, uh diseases that have been created through using animals. There should be a conclusion of that, and because it's actually an eclipse. It will probably be one that is um, you know, something about eclipsing that whole um. Disease-related uh illness out, okay? And so that is pretty much how the, is a little bit more to it, but I don't wanna put that on the internet, especially with all of these trolls. So you could just see how this thing ends up coming to a con- to a conclusion, this is the process for. Um, these different um. Eclipses and I mean new moons and full moons, so um. Let's look at the full moon, let's see, this is. The full moon is gonna be in um. I'm gonna put timestamps in here, the full moon is gonna be in Taurus. And um I didn't have a chance to look at this, but I will share later. This full moon is a continuation of the new moon, and the new moon. I remember, well, the new moon um. For Taurus was in. The new moon, the Taurus new moon was. the new moon, the Taurus new moon was May the nineteenth, and that was at twenty-eight degrees of Taurus. And so we're gonna see a, whatever has been worked on underground until this point is gonna come out, and um you'll be able to see, let's look at twenty, what did I say, twenty-nine Taurus? I think it's twenty-nine. Um, I think I said twenty-nine. Yeah, twenty-eight Taurus, yeah, twenty-eight. Let's look and see what that is. Twenty-eight of Taurus. Alright, so this head could only, could rightly be called the teacher of cosmic universal physics. He makes the spiritual light understand the cosmic powers, their analogies, and their legality in nature, and teaches the him how to control them. This guy can reveal to the spiritual light many metaphysical and metaphysic secrets in regard to nature. Phenomena have become clear to the spiritual light in their causes and effects due to his growing knowledge of cosmic powers, do not leave him in any doubt. And he not only finds the correct explanation for any natural phenomenon looking at it from the hermetic angle, but depending on it's his personal maturity, he is able to bring about such phenomena by himself. A true spiritual light however will never cause any chaos, blah blah blah, cuz you get karma. Okay, so this is a guy who is about um cosmic universal physics, which basically the um, this is what the the channelers have all been talking about. Shalawam, shalawam, this is what the channelers have all been talking about, um learning this um cosmic physics um and how to use a zero-point field, so I'll take this as a time to talk a little bit about this. There is, um the zero-point field is basically where you can retreat to when you are trying to um deal with certain kind of heavy information, right? And so um, it's a fluctuation within that field, and you fluctuate in and out of that field. And so what you're trying to accomplish is to be able to maintain the frequency, and even if your frequency changes, you want to um, you wanna be able to get into that, back into that zero point. And so again, this is where you use that whole concept of emotion as momentum because your emotion is what will get you into that field, and that emotion is tied to your level of philanthropy, how much you give. And remember, it's not just giving as in money, you can also be an energy philanthropist, which is why I have the meetings, so people can learn my thought process about, behind how to to do these things with the new moons and the full moons so that they can be able to actually do this stuff for themselves and their family and their friends and their communities, because there's not a thousand me's, there's only one of me, but it's a lot of ways this information can get out to many people so that it can be used. So with the full moon, hello, 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 so with the full moon, you wanna release, and so that you have to look to find out where your Taurus house is on your chart, and you want to um release any blockages to whatever that Taurus full house is. So again, we'll have another meeting um about a few days out before so that you can prepare. I'm just like um giving you an overview of what is coming up so that you can actually have an understanding of how this all goes together, because it's not just the new moons and the full moons, you have these different celestial placements in between, and if you you know, are so focused on, this is what the Gentiles have done, or these you know, these forbidden people have done, they so focused on the new moons and the full moons, they forget all these different little placements in between, and they get caught up in a bunch of mess. So I was looking at the Watchers calendar, um I have a um I downloaded the Orthodox calendar to see what of these days um what kind of effect they had, and one thing I noticed is that um if you didn't know the government was supposed to shut down, this is back into kinda mundane stuff, but the government was supposed to shut down tomorrow, but they've got a continuing resolution for fifteen, forty-five days. So that puts them at November the fifteenth. So November the fifteenth is a fast day um anyway. But it's um, it doesn't tell me who these martyrs are, but there's some martyrs of course associated with this day, um and it's a fast day, and it is a Wednesday. But it's also, this calendar is upside down. On the Watchers calendar, which I've downloaded from um this is um the entirety of the Bible basically on like one-year calendar. So you can see how the different um things overlay. I got this from Repo Man, this is his, his child, so I've been using this. Um on November the tenth, basically from September the fifteenth to November the tenth is fifty-seven days, um of course there, um what did I say, uh yeah, November the fifteenth. So this fifty-seven day time period is um it's the, it's the number of days that um, oh, this is also the day um that it covers the time when birds and fish, day five of creation. And it also um covers the time where um Mary was unclean, because she had a um because after you give birth to a male child, you have to wait forty days, you're unclean for forty days. And I did during this time, that at the end of this time, last year, somewhere in here, they had a um last year was the blood moon eclipse, where that blood moon was, it was it went in white, it went in red and it came out white, so that was kinda like representing the cleansing of Mary after she had been, you know, a- after having given birth, so it's very interesting how that lines up. I can't remember what he said this fifty-seven days was, but it's, it's like three sets of fifty-seven days on here, so um oh, this was the day also, November the tenth, where Noah leaves the ark after one year and ten days. So there's um, cuz the flood was four days, but he left the ark door open for seven days before the um, the flood actually started. So there's a lot of little interesting tidbits that um that line up with this time period, that they're gonna be, you know, trying to negotiate this whole deal. But one important thing is, and this is kinda like looking forward to November, they timed this thing with the new moon. So we have a Scorpio new moon on um November the thirteenth, and if you don't think they timed this stuff with the moon, you're crazy. We have a Scorpio new moon on November the thirteenth, and their government is set to, is set to shut down again on November the fifteenth, so yeah, that's within, within the three days of the new moon. And let me read you what this Scorpio new moon is about, because I was like, oh, these people are doing magic for real. We think we doing magic, no, they doing real magic. Forty-five days, ni- ni- forty-five days is crazy, let me just from a, a person who follows this stuff. Forty-five days is crazy because they normally do a continuing resolution for September, October the first through the end of the year. So the fact that they're just doing it for forty-five days right before the holidays, it's, it's nuts, this is crazy. So I said twenty, right? Twenty degrees of Scorpio, so this head will teach the spiritual light to make various medicines from the most diverse types of metals and their combinations. This guy is a great inspires, inspirer of all medicines which can be produced by synthetic procedures. Is this twenty? Yeah, oh wow. Um a spiritual light can increase his knowledge if he allows this guy to teach him which way certain metals can be used for medicinal purposes. So using a metal for medicinal purpose, um they're trying to use money to solve their governmental problems, so this is how this all ties in together, you can clearly see they're using their magic to try and do this thing, and so this is why um, you know, kind of off-topic from the um, oh, one more thing. The um, the the twenty-two day fast for Saturn, I also give y'all the preview on that. Um Saturn goes, since we're talking about November, Saturn goes direct on November the third. Um, so we're gonna start our twenty-two day fast on the first of November. Um I don't have all of the details yet, but we'll go from the first to the twenty-second, cuz the twenty-second is Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and then the twenty-third is Thanksgiving, so the twenty-two day fast is gonna start on the first, and y'all already know these twenty-two day fasts be super, super potent, um, so that's really important. Alright, let me go back to my notes, I actually wrote some notes down cuz I didn't wanna get too off track. Um, so this magic that they be using, right? I don't know if I wrote the notes on this. We have to really focus in on um acting in our sovereignty. And this, this happens in different ways for different people, right? Because sovereignty is not just about yeah, oh, I'm a sovereign, you know, or I'm a sovereign citizen, never, ever, no, we're not sovereign citizens, absolutely not. Acting in your sovereignty is about making sure that you are doing what fits your design, meaning you know your chart, you know your human design, you know your patterns, you know the energies coming to you, and you have to act in those energies. So what I, what's happening for me personally is that a lot of time, my understanding of these energies are being challenged. And I have to really go back and look and reflect on if the behavior that I'm exhibiting is um vibrationally matching the energy that's coming out, and sometimes it is, and sometimes it isn't. But it's really important to at least have this on your mind, because um something that came up for me the other day was this whole concept of um the live birth fraud, like people who have been studying like sovereignty at all, they understand about the birth certificates and all of that, and so we have to, this is why it's good to have this information, as I mentioned in the beginning, for yourself, for your kids, for whoever, because eventually we have to stop letting them issue affidavits for our, for the births of our children. Because all they're doing is taking that information, figuring out who has certain placements, running it through the machine, seeing who has certain placements which are pinging out, and then they won't tell you what time that you were born on the birth certificate, but you best believe they have the time, they have the exact time. And so you have to really like work to like document all of these things every step along the way, because they have all the information and they're trying to hide it from you, and you, it's, it's really difficult to to operate without understanding how so much of this stuff works. And the same thing with death certificates, because we never die, there, death is not even real. So why are they giving you a certificate for death when death is not real? Unless you believe death is real, then that's fine, but if death is not real, why are you letting them issue a certificate for your death? That's crazy, no, they shouldn't be in charge of that. We should be the ones who are in control of that information being disseminated to our people. So in that video that I shared about aestheticism, they talk about how when someone dies, they literally like have them in their house in the east for like three days. And they come and they hold their hands, and they cry over them, and they pray and all this stuff, for three days. And then even when they go and bury the person, after having them in their house for three days, there's still like candles, vigils, all this stuff like for forty days. People are literally mourning for like forty days after someone dies, so this is not like no little small thing, you know what I mean, we really have to um, you know, bring some of that stuff back into our memory, into our understanding. But this is like one of those things where if you give up a little bit of power, you giving up a lot, so you have to really work hard to, you know, hold on to all of these things, and so like I said, I use the orthodoxy, I am going to use orthodoxy to teach it to my kids so that they know, hey, when I die, you gonna hold me, uh first of all, I better die in this house, don't let me go to no hospital and die, I don't care how sick I am, don't take me to the hospital. That's one. Two, you leave me right in this house, I'm gonna tell you who to call, y'all prepare my body. None of this nursing home or or funerals home and all of that crap, send me around a bunch of dead people. No, you send me right here, y'all pray over my body for three days, then y'all take me to wherever y'all gonna bury me, hopefully it'll be in the backyard. Y'all bury me, and then y'all put candles and stuff by my thing every day. For forty days, y'all gonna, I'm gonna give them the whole rundown. They're gonna know, but it's gonna be already ingrained, and so I'm going to use, I'm going to leverage the Orthodox religion to do that for my kids, because how else you wanna teach it to kids? How else would you explain it to anybody, like I it's crazy, it sound crazy to hold the body in the house for three days, like, don't take the body out the house for three days. Prepare my body in the, that's weird, like, I'm sorry, that's weird, that's weird. Never have, never call the medical examiner, never do none of that stuff. No, don't do none of it, don't report to these people that I'm dead, you don't have to um, you don't have to do any of that. Look, we ain't talking about that here, you don't have to do that. They tell you have to do it, but that's you, again, giving up your sovereignty into this system. So you have to remove your sovereignty from this system, and you have to really focus in on what it is that you want for yourself and and what feels comfortable and what feels right for you. Um cuz I had heard stories about the Orthodox, from some Orthodox people online, talking about how they build their own coffins, and then they use their coffins as bookshelves. I was like, that's weird, isn't it, like, is nobody gonna say that's weird, but now I'm like, oh, I get it, because if you have the books, your favorite books on that shelf for your whole life, when you die, you got all, the wood has absorbed all that information, and you get to take that with you, you know, like not necessarily physically, but spiritually, you'll be taking that with you, so yeah, like that sounded more, I'm, 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 I'm digging this whole concept more and more. Um the more I think about it, the more it's like, wow, yeah, this is, this feels like some way I wanna take my sovereignty back, so that's me. I give my example, because I always tell people, don't do what I do, I, what I do is extreme, extreme, extreme. So don't do this, but it's just, you know, an idea, a thought process, you know, whatever. So I thought that um, you know, this might be helpful for people. Again, we'll have a meeting on Nov- October the eleventh to talk about the um Libra new moon, and this will be the very first new moon that we um that we're following the evening and the morning, which is what is given to us in um Genesis one and one, so this will be the very first one that we do, the the evening and the morning. Um no, 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 we did one if for um, for Virgo, but it wasn't in this format that I have now. Um so this will be the first one where we got the format down, and we'll be able to track it from uh Libra new moon to Libra full moon, the Libra full moon, let me tell y'all when that is. Um, here we go, the Libra full moon uh, oh, it's in twenty-twenty-four, hold on, I got twenty-twenty-four written down too. Here we go, the Libra full moon is in right, right after our new year, so it's on the twenty-fifth of March, that's the Libra full moon. Um, so what we, what we start now, we're gonna finish at that Libra full moon. At least we're go, not gonna finish it, we're going to um, it's gonna be fully illuminated by then, and then by the Libra new moon again um, in October, October the second, we should see the full um, the day and the evening and then the morning, we should see the full rotation. So um, I hope this makes sense for people. Um again, we will have our meeting on uh October the eleventh. Sign up for my newsletter, or get on the Discord server, that it'll be there. Um I probably won't talk too much more about this, um unless I absolutely have to. What I'm trying to do is limit the number of um things I say repetitively, because I feel like it's unnecessary, like the people who understand it, get it, and the people who don't, don't, and um it's a, it's a, a bad use of my, my energy philanthropy to keep repeating the same things over and over again to people who don't actually care. To people who don't actually care or if they do care they're not doing anything about it They're sitting back and waiting for the most high to come and rescue them on a chariot which is fine you know Everybody can do whatever they wanna do it's just over here we want to We wanna do the will the will and the work of the most high and that includes taking over from these people and their wickedness and their evil. So um of course if anyone has any questions send me an email um the links and all this stuff will be in the description Um, at uh I'll put that up when I do the video um I mean when the video is over um. And anybody needs me for anything feel free to email me shalom everyone and we will see you in the next video.